Okay, so we're doing the review video now for our unit on cell communication. So I'm going to go through several things. So we're going to kind of talk about the types of cell communication and look at where neurotransmitters and hormones fit into that and kind of review a little bit about what you need to know about those two examples. Then we're going to look at the cell signaling pathway and kind of go back over the steps in the pathway. We're going to look at the regulation, the idea of positive and negative feedback. Then we're going to look at the cell cycle, particularly at the stages of mitosis and at the ways it's regulated. And then we're going to finish by looking at the Chi square stuff. I will say that on this test, a lot of it is like, here's a diagram, be able to interpret it. So you do need this kind of background knowledge, but I can't necessarily prepare you for each and every question. You kind of need to have an overall big picture understanding and then the ability to kind of apply that. So all of your multiple choice quizzes that you've done during the unit are still open. And then you have the MYAP multiple choice questions. So probably one of the best things you can do is just go back over those kinds of questions and look at what do the questions look like? Which ones, you know, did I get right? Do I understand why I got it right? Which ones did I get wrong and so forth? So just kind of going back and referring to some of those as resources would be great. So I do want to kind of again review kind of the five kind of content things because although there's a lot of application, you definitely need to know the content to be able to apply it. So there's three types of cell communication that we talked about. So three different ways that we covered that cells can communicate. And we looked at kind of the different examples in terms of the body systems that go with each one. So the first one, and we do them in slightly different order, but I'm going to do the first one is kind of the one we're going to spend the least amount of time on, which is direct cell-to-cell contact. So in this case, communication requires one cell physically touching another cell. So this cell here has like a marker on it. This cell here has a receptor on it. And this cell is going to activate this one. But they're only going to activate again when they come into direct contact with each other. So this one is going to cause by a direct kind of contact. So those are not the most kind of common ways of the communication. So the most of the time our bodies want to avoid that because this requires proximity. And so it's a little bit more of a difficult way to facilitate it. The main example we talked about that uses this is the immune system. So in the immune system, the marker is usually an antigen. So an antigen is a protein on the outside of a cell that identifies either who, basically who identifies who it is. So sometimes it's a matter of that antigen being on a pathogen that says this is the type of pathogen it is. Sometimes it's a marker on our cells that say, I'm not a pathogen. But basically the antigen kind of provides the identity, whether it's a self or a pathogen. So our immune cells basically are checking antigens. And if the antigen is a self marker, then it's safe. If the antigen is an actual pathogen marker, then the body's going to initiate an immune response. So this actually works by literally touching cells and confirming their identity. So that's cell-to-cell contact that does that. The next thing that we talked about is going to be through endocrine signaling or distance communication. So endocrine signaling, this is the one that specifically relates to hormones. So in this case, we have a sending cell. And it's going to release a ligand. So it's going to release a actual separate chemical messenger. So you'll notice here, there's no chemical messenger. So it's a direct, it's a surface-to-surface. There's not that kind of added piece where a ligand plays a role. So this time we are going to actually release a ligand and it's actually going to be released into the bloodstream. Because in this case, the receiving cell is far away. So over here are some other cells. And different cells have different receptors on them. So what you can see is those are some faraway cells. This is my ligand, which means that this cell here can receive it. So this is my target cell. And it has the correct receptor. So the receptor is going to be matched to the ligand. These cells here are non-target cells, so they are not going to ever receive that message. So that's kind of the nature of endocrine signaling is the release of a ligand into the bloodstream. And it will only be received by the correct target cells, not by all the other cells. And of course, this is how your hormones work. So this is how our whole endocrine system, our hormones work. And in this case, the sending cell is usually a gland. So a gland from the endocrine system releases a ligand, which is a hormone. And it goes into the bloodstream until it reaches the kind of receptor cells that need to respond to that hormone. We did talk a little bit about the types of hormones. The main distinction you need to understand is if the hormone is fat-based, it's a steroid hormone, it can actually go straight into the cell membranes. Whereas if it's protein-based, it's going to have to be received by an external receptor on the cell membrane. So we have kind of our fat soluble or steroid hormones. And they are actually non-polar and they can therefore enter cells. And then we have our protein-based, which can be either the amino acid or peptide ones. And these are going to be polar and therefore they cannot enter cells. So they are going to have the plasma membrane receptors instead because they can't actually enter our cells. So that's kind of the main distinction you would need to know. Some of the important ones, so again, these are all covered in your classmates' videos. So a lot of the ones, so you definitely need to know about insulin and glucagon. Those are probably the most asked about ones. So we will cover them when we do feedback again and just kind of look over that. And you have those, those are in the notes as well that we did in class. So that's kind of the example I gave because they do ask about that a lot. But you can also see they'll ask about like ADH, which is the anti-diuretic one. They'll ask about your thyroid hormones. They can ask about your sex hormones. They can ask about plant hormones like auxin and ethylene. So there's a lot of different hormones that you could see kind of it being asked about. It will give you the information you need. You're just going to be interpreting. So you don't have to memorize your hormones. So don't worry about looking up a list and memorizing every hormone. You just need to be able to interpret information accurately about the hormones. Okay, and then the last type, and actually I was going to fit them all here, but I'm going to erase it because you don't quite have room for that. The last type is the kind of short distance, so autocrine or short distance signaling. Or paracrine, sorry. And in this case, we have a sending cell. And again, it's going to release a ligand. But the ligand is just going to float right over here to my receptor cell. So it does release a ligand. So unlike cell-to-cell contact, they don't ever have to touch. There is a chemical that goes between them, but they're in the same physical proximity. So it's never going to actually enter the bloodstream. It can travel straight across. And the main example you need to know of this is synaptic signaling. There are other examples, but in terms of what it could ask about, that's going to be your main one. There's a handful of questions about nerves. There's really not anything that's about the detail of action potentials. So the questions that are about neurons on the test are very much about the synapse and looking at the idea of neurotransmitters. So that's kind of what I'm going to focus on. But you do need to kind of understand action potential in terms of only how it fits into that pathway. So remember, action potential is a change in electrical charge. So action potential is when a positive charge moves down a neuron. So action potential is a positive charge through a neuron. So this neuron here has a positive charge moving through it. When the positive charge reaches here, these are the axon terminals. And when it reaches the axon terminals, in the axon terminals, there's these voltage gated calcium channels. So they're keeping the calcium out. When the actual action potential arrives, that positive charge causes this to open. And out is getting in, sorry, into my axon terminal. In is going to come my calcium. So the action potential causes calcium to go in. So when the action potential reaches that, it causes that to go in. That then causes the neurotransmitters to be released. So I have little vesicles of neurotransmitters. And when calcium binds to those vesicles, it's going to cause the neurotransmitters to go into the synapse and be released. So that's kind of why action potentials are important in terms of this level of communication. It's because the action potential is what intrigues the release of the neurotransmitters. So they are closely linked to one another. And then that neurotransmitter being released is going to travel across the synapse into a receptor on the next neuron along. So that neurotransmitter is going to land on a receptor. And that receptor is on the dendrites of the next neurotransmitter. And so when that happens, the neurotransmitter never actually enters. But what that causes is it causes the first set of sodium channels to open. So the actual reception of the neurotransmitter causes sodium channels to open. And then when they open, the sodium's going to rush in. And that's going to cause a sudden positive charge inside, which is going to start the next action potential. And then of course, that action potential is ultimately going to reach the axon terminals, trigger calcium to move in, trigger the release of the next neurotransmitter, which is going to be received by the next dendrites, and this is going to continue on. And remember, these neurotransmitters are not going to stay in the synapse. They are going to go back into the original cell, get stored back in vesicles until we need to release them again. If they stayed in the synapse, they would just keep triggering messages even when they're not supposed to. So they have to go back in and wait until they're needed again. So that's kind of really the level of what you really need to understand in terms of neurons for the test. So just understanding this piece here, the idea that the neurotransmitter is in the synapse and that that causes the next set of ion channels to open. So it's a good example of like an ion gated receptor. So the receptor triggers the release of an ion, the opening of an ion channel, which causes ions to move in. So this is kind of, you don't need to know about like repolarization and threshold and negative 70 microvolts versus 40 microvolts and the details of it. But you do need to kind of understand here what the overall thing is and how do action potentials link to neurotransmitters. So that's kind of our third type of communication that we talked about. And again, not going into tons and tons of detail about that because there's about six questions or so that actually relate to neurons on the whole test. And they really are zoomed in right here, making sure that you understand all of that. Okay, so that's kind of our three types. Now what I want to look at is the actual three steps in the process. So we have our three steps in the cell signaling process. And again, most of the signaling questions are really more like, here's a diagram, can you interpret it? So it's not necessarily super, super straightforward, like you just have to memorize these three steps. But this can kind of remind you of what things that you need to be looking at and a few of the kind of key words. So the first step is reception. And at the reception step, what we're looking at is about the ligand, which is the messenger. So ligand, remember, is just any chemical messenger. And it binds to the receptor. And most of the time, this step of reception is happening at the cell membrane. So step one, reception, is all about the cell membrane. So there are two different types of receptors. So you can actually have a most common, a plasma membrane receptor. And if you have a plasma membrane receptor, that basically means the ligand binds at the plasma membrane. And it never actually goes into the cell. So step one is just received at the actual membrane itself. The second option is that there is an actual intracellular receptor, which means it's inside the actual membrane. And this step still involves the plasma membrane because in this case, what's happening is it crosses and meets its receptor somewhere inside the cell. So in both cases, either has to cross the membrane or at the membrane, and that's kind of what's happening. Remember, the only ones that can have intracellular receptors are if they're fat-based. So we're looking at our steroid hormones. Most everything else is going to be a plasma membrane receptor. So one of the things we talked about is kind of how does the receptor then respond? So what is the response of the, like, how does the receptor binding, what does that do? So that usually does one of a couple things. So it either creates a secondary messenger or it starts a phosphorylation kinase loop by doing the first phosphorylation, or it opens an ion channel. So what reception actually does kind of depends. So reception can it's going to cause kind of something that leads to the next step. So that can cause either ion channels to open. It can cause like a part of a protein to leave, so kind of a change in a G protein. Whereby part of the G protein breaks off and that's going to be what starts the next one. It can actually phosphorylate an enzyme that's right there at the membrane. So generally, the reception has some sort of kind of immediate triggering event. So we have a reception and then boom, something happens as a direct result of that reception. So ion channels opening is what happens in neurotransmitters. Change in G proteins is how a lot of our hormones work whereby when it's received, a protein breaks off of that kind of five protein complex and that breaking off starts the next step. Phosphorylating basically means there's an enzyme right there. And when the protein is actually bound, that starts the immediate pathway. So the reception causes something to happen that's going to then lead to step two. So step two is transduction or the signal transduction pathway. And the signal transduction pathway is all about moving the signal through the cytoplasm. So step one was about receiving the signal at the cell membrane. This is about moving the signal through the cytoplasm. So in this case, there's usually, it's going to usually be multiple steps. And it usually involves what's called a phosphorylation cascade. Which is basically one enzyme after another activating itself. So a series of enzyme activations. And again, this is not something, like this is more something you would just need to be able to see in a diagram. So a lot of times the diagrams, if they look complicated, what they're just trying to show is this activates this, which activates this, which activates this, which activates this. So it's just kind of a domino effect, if you will. If you knock this one down, it's going to knock this one down, which is going to knock this one down. A lot of times it uses a secondary messenger at the start. And that secondary messenger is often cyclic AMP. So one of the main things that can happen is in the G protein, this change in a G protein is what actually activates cyclic AMP. So that's kind of a really common pathway whereby we receive the ligand at the plasma membrane receptor. That causes this cluster of G proteins right at that reception to change and two of the subunits break off. That causes this enzyme that can form CAMP to activate. And then the CAMP is then going to be what starts the cascade. Again, you will, that will be given to you. So you're never going, I'm just not going to just say like, hey, fourth thyroxine, explain the pathway with no diagram. So any of this is going to be shown to you. You just need to be able to make sense of it. You need to be able to look at it and follow that. There were the examples that we looked at where I drew, I put pictures from a combination of Khan Academy and test questions. So that's in like lesson three, I think. It was a classwork activity, so that's still in Canvas. You can also go back and look at those and just kind of remind yourself what might the pictures look like and can I make sense of them, which is something we practice in class. So the goal of the pathway here, and this is often the most complicated part, but honestly, you don't necessarily have to know about it in tons of detail, is you can just kind of follow along. And then the third step is once it reaches the end of that pathway, is that we're going to have a response. And so the response is usually going to be in the nucleus, although sometimes it's going to just be in the cytoplasm. So in some cases, the actual response, if it's like a metabolic response, it doesn't ever actually have to go into the nucleus itself. It can activate something inside the cytoplasm, like the mitochondria or lysosomes or something like that. So it's not always in the nucleus, but that's really common. So what we're looking at is really what's called the molecular response, which is what changes in that cell. And of course, that's going to lead to a macro response, which is what does that do to the organism? So what does that cause a change in the overall organism? But the molecular is just what happens in the cell. The most common ones that we talked about were gene expression. So most of the time, what happens is that final phosphorylation starts transcription. So a lot of times, the last step in the pathway is to actually phosphorylate a transcription factor, which starts transcription, which makes messenger RNA, which is ultimately going to make a protein that's needed by the body. Another big example that we saw is metabolism. So it can have a increased metabolism effect. And in this case, often what it will trigger is some sort of like getting more glucose. So it can increase glucose levels. So that can be by breaking down glycogen, in some way triggering or undergoing more glycolysis. So it's something in the body saying, I need more energy. So it might be get me more glucose or take the glucose I have plenty of and get me more ATP. So increasing kind of energy available. And then the third one that I want to kind of look at is what links to our next kind of topic, which is our cell cycle. So if you think about the example of kind of like CDK. So when CDK is active, it causes cell division. So the molecular response would be to start the next stage of the cell cycle. So kind of depending on which CDK that might be, it might be DNA replication. It might be causing spindle formation. So in that case, the active enzyme is doing something that leads to kind of cell division. So something that's linked to kind of overall growth. So those are kind of the responses that you could see occurring. So again, lots of different examples you're going to see of this. Just kind of always be looking for where's the receptor and what's happening as a result of the reception. So what change does the reception make? Do you see some sort of pathway? In the pathway, is there a secondary messenger involved? What kind of, where's the domino effect? So looking for that kind of domino effect. And then from looking at it, what's the response that we're triggering? Are we making more energy in some form? Are we making mRNA that's going to make a protein? Are we prompting some sort of cell division process? So those are just kind of steps to be looking at when you're considering what's going on in a picture. The next thing that it looks at is regulation. And again, I actually think if you look at these, these are probably the easiest things on the test is just to determine whether it looks like it's a negative or positive feedback loop. So this is our kind of feedback loops. And so basically, what you're going to be looking for when you're doing this is kind of what does the response do? So in a feedback loop, we've already talked about kind of our signaling pathway, we got to response. So then our question becomes, what impact does the response have? So this is kind of at the end, we're then asking, okay, well now, what is the impact of that response? And there's kind of two options. Option one is the response causes more of a response. So the response actually just reinforces the pathway. So you know, ethylene and fruit ripening. So as fruit begins to ripen, that actually produces more ethylene, which causes more ripening, which produces more ethylene, which causes more ripening. So in this case, it reinforces or encourages a further response. The opposite of that is that the response resolves the problem and stops itself. So you don't need it any further. So if you're sweating, the reason you're sweating is to cool your body down. Sweating will cool your body down and then you'll stop sweating. So thankfully, it's not like, hey, if you start sweating, you're going to sweat more and sweat more and sweat more. Or we become very quickly dehydrated. So there's kind of two options. So the response either reinforces itself or causes even more of a response. Or it resolves a problem, removing the need for the response. So those are kind of the two things. So when you look at the question, that's kind of what you need to ask, is what is the response doing? So if it reinforces itself, that is a positive feedback loop. If it causes the problem that started it to go away, that is a negative feedback loop. So most of the questions on this are like, here's an example, is it positive or negative? And so you just have to kind of stop and say, what's it causing? And so you just have to kind of stop and say, what's it causing to happen? So if the response is causing more of a response, then you're looking at the idea of it being positive. So this usually almost looks circular. So this does this and then just spirals. This looks more linear. This does this, boom, problem solved. So it's kind of circular versus linear is another way that you can kind of look at it. So most of the hormones in our bodies are negative feedback loops. Positive feedback loops in terms of like humans, in terms of our hormones are the ones related to childbirth. So oxytocin and prolactin, which are related to both breastfeeding and labor. Those are actually going to be positive feedback loops. Plants use more positive feedback loops. So ethylene, which is the hormone involved in plant ripening. Is a positive feedback loop. Platelet formation is a positive feedback loop. The neurotransmitter dopamine is a positive feedback loop whereby it creates more dopamine to tell you to do the activity more. If you do the activity more, it creates even more dopamine. And so it kind of continues like that. So those are just some examples we talked about, but we did not cover everyone. So you know, part of it is you'll have to go based on the information given and kind of see, does it look like it's causing an ongoing escalating response? So the response is increasing in severity over time. So basically increasing response over time. So again, if we look at the example of like childbirth, a woman starts having contractions. And if you look back twenty, you know, hours later, then she's having more contractions. If you look at fruit, it starts ripening and then it becomes even more ripe. So what we're looking for is whatever the response is, if you compare it at two points in time, the response should be even greater at a later point in time. So you're like, okay, if I stop now and I checked back on this, is my response less or greater? And if my response is greater, that's probably a positive feedback loop. With a negative feedback loop, your response is gonna start off strong and is actually gonna go away because you've resolved the issue. So again, if you're sweating and I see you sweating after workout and I check on you four hours later, you should be sweating less because you should have accomplished what you were trying to do there and actually have cooled yourself down. So the response should go down over time rather than going up over time. So basically, almost all of our hormones, so most human hormones are gonna fit into the negative feedback loop. So I did say humans, because you have to be careful. If the question's talking about rat hormones or something, they may have a totally different way of regulating it than we do. But most of ours are gonna fit into that. So kind of insulin and glucagon are our main examples. So insulin is gonna, its job is gonna be to decrease blood sugar. So basically, we release insulin when our blood sugar is high. As soon as it's lowered, our blood sugar, we're good. We don't need any more insulin. And then the opposite of that is the glucagon. Which is going to increase blood sugar. So those should be short targeted reactions. So we had a problem, higher or low blood sugar. We released a hormone, we resolved the problem, and now we don't need the hormone anymore. So insulin should be released in a short burst and then immediately kind of go down. So that's kind of our human hormones example. The other ones are your thyroid hormones. So generally, your thyroid stimulating hormone will increase until it receives a message that you actually have plenty of thyroid hormone in your body. Your metabolism is what it's meant to be, in which case it will stop releasing it. So again, that's a very kind of short term, kind of solve a problem approach. And the other, like other things, including like body temperature is an example that is not related to hormones specifically, but is a negative feedback loop. And in this case, what you should see is that you should see a decrease in the response over time. Because if the response has been effective, it's removed the problem. And so we don't need it to kind of continue. So again, just kind of looking at those as examples and making sure you could identify positive versus negative from being able to look at examples and find that pathway and figure that out. Okay, next thing I wanna look at is cell cycle. So I wanna kind of do it as a chart, just something different than how we did it last time. So I wanna go through the stages of the cycle, particularly the stages of mitosis. And then I wanna look at the kind of regulation pathway. And then we'll wrap up with kind of our chi square stuff. So stages in the cell cycle. Alright, so I'm gonna include not just mitosis, because I do wanna talk about the other stages as well. So I'm gonna include the interfaces as well. And then I'm gonna include cell division. And I'm gonna skip prometa phase for right now, partly just for kind of speed. Sometimes you'll see those broken up and added that extra phase, sometimes you won't. Mitosis, telephase. And then our last phase is gonna be cytokinesis. Okay, so these are my stages. Apparently, I think I'm gonna draw like the world's smallest picture, so. Okay, so let's look at what's happening in G1. So in G1, the cell is going from this to this. So we're seeing an actual growth in the cell. And we're seeing a replication. So here's my nucleus, it hasn't really changed. But we are gonna copy some of our organelles. So that we have more of those ready. And so we're gonna kind of just build up the building blocks necessary. Also see kind of an increase in ATP during this time. Because you need the energy that you're gonna need to actually go through the rest of the stages. Building up of kind of building blocks and so forth. So this is gonna be our cell growth stage. And we're gonna go ahead and duplicate some of our organelles. During the S phase is all gonna be about DNA replication. Sorry, cells should be the same size. So during this time, each of our individual strands of DNA are duplicating. So for instance, here's a green strand. This time, I'm gonna have two copies of the green strand. Here's a blue strand. This time, I'm gonna have two copies of the blue strand. And I'm kind of drawing them on top of each other deliberately because it's still in the form of chromatin here. So they're still not kind of isolated, easily condensed, visible yet. They're just kind of on top, all kind of mixed in. But the key is there should be more of them there. So the key of it here is that sister chromatids form. Through DNA replication. So each individual piece of DNA makes an identical copy of itself. So that's really important because that's how we're gonna ensure that we have the right amount of genetic material going into mitosis. G2, we're basically going to be here with all my extra DNA. And it's gonna do further growing and we're gonna work on kind of forming our centrioles or centrosomes. Same word, just two different ways of saying it. Centrosome is a slightly more inclusive word that would include like the spindle fibers. Centriole is kind of just the core ones. So you can see it either way. So here we're gonna have our centrioles, centrosomes form. Some places will actually attribute that as part of S. It kind of isn't a clear, obviously, like there's no actual like road mark that says now is S, is no longer S, now it's G2. And then there's just gonna be further growth during this stage. And kind of checking to make sure again that we have enough organelles and that everything is kind of where it needs to be. So those are my centrioles. Okay, so now let's look at the stages of mitosis. And this is probably the most important part, is knowing these. Okay, so in our first one in pro phase, there's a few things that we need to note here. First of all, my nuclear membrane dissolves. Big vocab word, and that is that my chromatin becomes visible chromosomes. So at this point, instead of looking like that, they should be kind of condensed, meaning they're wrapped much more tightly. So the chromatin is wrapped much more tightly around the histones. So that now we have kind of a solid, small, visible thing as opposed to kind of a more messy thing like that. So we should be able to see visible chromosomes at this point. So chromatin, which is kind of in the less condensed form, condenses into visible chromosomes. And then the last thing is these centrioles are gonna move and start forming the spindle fibers. So they're gonna move to the sides. And the fibers are gonna start to develop out of them. And again, if we were to break into prometa phase, we would actually go ahead and move this step into prometa phase. So that's kind of my last part of pro phase that technically could be considered part of its own phase. And then those would go ahead and start attaching to those centers even before they're totally in the middle. So that's where prometa phase is just kind of a end of pro phase, beginning of meta phase step. So in meta phase, the first thing that's actually gonna happen is gonna be that the spindle fibers attach to the centromere. Then that's gonna kind of guide them even towards their movement to the center. And then the chromosomes line up in the center. Like that. And then my spindle fibers are gonna come and they're gonna attach. Like so. So that's at the end of meta phase. And again, this, these two here could be called prometa phase, those two steps if we were to break it up another time. Now in anaphase, we're gonna pull those away. And you'll see, I drew my cell a little bit wider then. So when it pulls it away, it actually pulls out the cytoplasm. So it does actually expand the cell. So the cell is gonna be a bit wider in anaphase because the spindle fibers actually will kind of push the cytoplasm out. And then the main thing is again, just terminology. This is gonna be really important in our next unit when we get into meiosis. But what we're separating is the sister chromatids. So this separate the sister chromatids, which are those identical copies that we made back in the S phase. So we're pulling apart those two identical copies. And then of course, we're moving them and that's expanding the cell. Telephase now, the cell again is gonna be kind of this widened cell. I'm drawing these in dotted lines just to show my nuclear membranes reforming. And then this no longer needs to be in this condensed form. So what you're gonna see is your DNA is going to relax itself back into chromatin. Remember, chromatin is actually more usable. So we actually want our DNA to be chromatin. When we get in next semester into transcription, the transcription can't happen in tightened chromosomes. Because the actual promoters can, region is kind of blocked. And so your actual transcription factors that start the process aren't really accessible. So we have to have it as chromatin, as that more relaxed state so that we can use all the genes. So chromosomes unwind into chromatin. Which is our usable form of DNA. So we only really had it in this really condensed form, really just through mitosis. So here to here, we have chromosomes that are tightly wound and visible. That means your DNA is temporarily unusable. So during this stage, all the cell is doing is working on dividing. It can't really do any other tasks. So as soon as we get through that, we wanna return to our nice spread out DNA so we can do what we need to be doing. And then cytokinesis, of course, is not actually part of mitosis. So it is its own stage of cell division, but not one of the four stages of mitosis itself. And what we're doing here is just dividing the actual cell. So we're actually splitting the cytoplasm. And that can happen one of two ways. So we're gonna use a cleavage furrow in animal cells or a cell plate in plant cells. So this is kind of drawing the shape of an animal cell. So that's a cleavage furrow. Which is just kind of a set of fibers that actually contribute to the pinching. In plant cells, they have like a tougher plate that has to form because of the presence of a cell wall. Okay, so there are some questions, thankfully, they're probably the easy questions. There are some questions where you just need to know the sequence of these steps. So you just need to be comfortable being able to follow that sequence. And you know, go through that and actually be able to say, okay, if this is happening, then yep, it's meta phase. If this is happening, it's anaphase. So just kind of being able to identify the stage. So make sure you know those, because those should be easy questions. You don't wanna miss the easy questions. Okay, regulation now. And then chi square. And then I've kind of given you all the content you need. You just need to make sure you're wearing your thinking cap on the day of the test. And really kind of going through the questions analytically and really kind of thinking them through. So I wanna look at kind of how do we regulate the cell cycle? Hope if I can spell. And there's kind of four ways. And remember, kind of going into this, that the idea is if the cell cycle goes well, so a healthy cell cycle is important because that's gonna lead to both growth and repair. So if your cell cycle is going well, you're able to grow. Which even if you're fully grown, that's gonna enable you to grow muscle tissue. So you can work out and get stronger. And then you're gonna be able to repair if you get damaged. So you can, you know, go out in the sun and it's fine. You can replace your skin if you need to, you get new healthy blood cells. So it's gonna lead to kind of a general healthy, you know, lifestyle. If however, an error in the cell cycle, so if your cell cycle becomes uncontrolled, then that's gonna lead to tumor formation and cancer. AP doesn't have a whole lot on benign versus malignant tumors. But just remember, a tumor is just a cluster of cells. We don't actually consider it to be malignant or true cancer until it starts breaking off from that cluster and traveling throughout your body. But generally, a tumor is the start of cancer. So a cluster of fastly replicating uncontrolled cells. Then over time, they will start to break off and can lead to kind of true, kind of what we think of as cancer. Okay, so what we wanna do is it's really important that we don't have an uncontrolled cell cycle. So the four things that we wanna look at that cause that. So the first thing is we wanna have what are called external regulators. And the goal of external regulators is that this is what's gonna tell the cell that it should leave G0 and go into true enter phase. And when they're called external, because it's outside of the cell itself. So the cell's just there in G0 going about its business. And then something outside of it says, hey, it's time. And so then it's gonna leave G0 and go into the cell cycle. So that's not something the cell itself decides. It's waiting on an external signal to tell it it's time to do that. So those can be things like human So those can be things like human growth hormone. It can be the trigger realizing cells have died. So a lot of times our skin cells are triggered by the death of cells near them to say, oh hey, the cells near us are dying. It's time. And so then that will cause them to go in. So some sort of external regulator. And that's again, really important because we want to make sure that we're not sending cells out of G0 that are supposed to stay in G0. The next set are called positive regulators. So these are things within the cell. And positive regulators are things that cause the cell to progress. So if these are activated, they are going to actually cause the cell cycle to continue. So these are what I said, think of as these being like keys. So the cell cycle is actually locked at every step. So you finish this, there's a lock. So these positive regulators are keys. So they're like, okay, yep, here you go. Okay, here you go. So they allow the cell to continue. So positive regulator, because if active, it causes more cell division. So more positive regulators equals more cell division. So the more we activate these positive regulators, the more cell division takes place. So the main examples of these are the CDK and cyclin. So CDK plus cyclin. So remember, CDK is normally inactivated. Which means the cell cycle stays locked. Cyclin, when produced, activates CDK. And that progresses the cycle. So cyclin is really what activates CDK, which is what opens the key, the door to allow the next thing to happen. So these are also called oncogenes or proto-oncogenes. And so if there's a mutation. What happens is they become too active and therefore we have too much cell division. So this can happen with CDK. If there's a mutation and my CDK stays on all the time. Then instead of waiting on cyclin, it's just like giving somebody the keys that who aren't, isn't supposed to have access. And like, here, everybody can come in, everybody can come in. And they let the cycle happen without kind of stopping and waiting on what should be a requirement from cyclin. It lets it happen way too quickly. So these are kind of genes that if they're active, they promote cell division. So if we have a mutation in them, they tend to become overly active. And if they become overly active, that actually leads to too much division. Now if we had a mutation that just caused you to have no CDK, then that would actually cause too little cell division. And that could cause things like inability to heal. So kind of related to growth problems. So you could actually have it happen the other way. Where you could actually have them underactive oncogenes, but that's not going to cause cancer. So if we're looking at it in the context of cancer, our concern is them being too active. So overactive oncogenes can cause cancer. The third type is the negative regulators. So our negative regulators, instead of being keys, these are going to be our brakes. So these are supposed to have the ability to stop the cell cycle when a problem is detected. So just like you don't want to drive a car that doesn't have any brakes, we want to make sure our cell cycle has a brake. So it's able to stop the cell cycle when activated. And usually that's because of some sort of damage detected. So some sort of damage is detected. As a result, these are going to put on the brakes. So if these are active. It's going to decrease cell division. So an increase in our negative regulators is actually going to decrease our cell division. So that's an important thing that if we increase those, we're actually able to actually put a stop to division. And that's protective. And so these are called tumor suppressor genes. Which basically is what it sounds like, they suppress the formation of tumors. The most common example is P53. And over 50% of people that have cancer have had it linked to defect in their P53 gene. So these are kind of, if they have a mutation. And the mutation causes them to be inactive. Then we get too much division. So here, our concern is that we're going to have mutations that make these overly active. Here, our concern is we're going to have mutations that make these inactive. So we don't need to have too many keys, we don't need to have too faulty a brakes. We need to have only keys to when we're supposed to be progressing. And we need to only have brakes and we need to have functional brakes that work when they're supposed to. So that's kind of those two pieces. So just making sure you can kind of follow a question to understand that either of these situations could lead to the formation of cancer. And then the last one, put just down here, is then checkpoints. And checkpoints kind of relate to the last two. So checkpoints are basically an internal pause to look for any sort of signs of damage. So they're kind of related to our positive and negative regulators. Because the idea is we should stop and make sure that we have everything that we need before we progress. So checkpoints kind of pause and wait for positive regulators to activate. So they say, okay, before we go further, let's make sure everything's looking on track, that we're making the correct things that we need to progress. And they also give a chance for negative regulators to become active by saying, wait, let's make sure there's not any damage that we can see that would cause us to need to turn on the brakes. So they're basically just kind of a pause point to make sure that we're meeting the criteria we need to progress. And that we're not seeing any signs of problems. And so those happen three times during G1, during G2, and during meta phase. So in G1, we're saying, okay, are we growing the right amount? Are we, you know, is there any inherent damage in the cell? And again, if so, we need to have a negative regulator turn on and stop it. If it's growing the right amount, then we should be creating enough cyclin to allow the positive regulators to allow it to continue. So those are just kind of a pause point to make sure everything's kind of going on track. So those are kind of the four things you could be asked about in terms of regulators. And again, most of the time it's in some sort of context where you're given some information. And what you're being asked to do is kind of predict the outcome or make sense of the information. So if it says like a mutation has happened in this way, what's going to be the outcome? You would need to say, well, if it's a mutation in a cyclin gene that causes it to be too active. Then that's going to cause too much division and that's going to cause a tumor. So just being able to kind of follow consequences. Okay, last thing I want to cover because there is going to be one question on this on the test, is the chi square test for independence. And specifically what we're looking at here is is there a statistically significant difference between two data groups? So we're asking, is there a statistically significant difference between two groups of data? Okay, so we need to go through kind of what is the null hypothesis? How do you work out the calculations? And then what all would you have to find out? So remember, the null hypothesis is always going to be the hypothesis of no difference. So we're saying there is not a difference. So in this case, our null hypothesis is that there's going to be no statistically significant difference between the two groups. And any difference that we were to see is just due to chance. So it'd be like if I had two ninth grade classes and they were both all ACES students. And I was like, okay, my null hypothesis should be that there shouldn't be a statistically significant difference in their performance. Because they're kind of the same type of students running through the same program. Yes, one test, one might have an 87 average and one have an 85. The next test, it could be 85 and 83. That's just due to chance, so a bit of just random sampling error. There may be a small difference, but I would hold that there's not a statistically significant difference. Now if I was instead comparing like a level ninth grade class to an ACES ninth grade class. Then I would say, okay, in that case, it's likely that there is an actual reason for a difference. It's not just chance, there's an actual inherent difference between those two groups. So my null hypothesis is there no difference. And then my experimental hypothesis is that there is a difference. And there's usually going to be a reason for what I think. So based on what the experiment is, you would say there is an experimental difference due to blah, blah, blah. So in that case, I might say my experimental hypothesis is there is going to be a higher performance among my ACES ninth grade students to my level ninth grade students. So this time I'm saying, I do think there's a significant difference. And here's why I think there's a significant difference. So the null hypothesis is always no difference. Experiment's hypothesis is saying what the difference would be. So I'm going to give an example for us to work through, similar to the one that we did in the lab. So we're just going to look at stages. So in this case, I'm going to compare yeast cells. So these are going to be healthy yeast cells to healthy human cells. And what we want to see is is there a difference kind of in the number of cells in division versus interphase? So my null hypothesis, of course, is going to be no difference. My experimental hypothesis would be that there is a difference. And I would have to research it to know what I thought. So I might say, you're going to see more cells in mitosis in yeast than you would in humans. Because we know their cell cycle is shorter and that they replicate more rapidly than humans. So in that case, I have to have a reason for it. But I would have some reason why I suspect there is in fact a difference. Okay, so this is going to be interphase. And this is going to be mitosis. Okay, so then my yeast cells is going to tell me that I have 182 that are in interphase, humans have 220 in interphase, 26 and 14. So again, I can't just divide evenly. So the first thing we need to talk about is how do you get, first of all, what table do you set up? And then how do you actually get the data? So I'm just going to write, I'm just going to erase this and then kind of show you where you would go from here. So when you're given data, you kind of need to make two tables. So you need to make your actual chi square calculation table. And then you're going to need to make your how to get expected. Your expected table is going to be very similar to the one I just did. So then you're going to need to do an expected table. So with your chi square, you're going to look at what your categories are. So we said here that our different categories were interphase for yeast. And then we can have interphase for humans. And then we can have mitosis for yeast. Mitosis for humans. And honestly, it doesn't matter what order you put this in. So you could have done interphase yeast, mitosis yeast, interphase human, mitosis human. It's going to work out the same way. So you're going to put whatever your different groups are. So first work out what your groups are. And yours is going to be similar to this on the test, so there should be four of them. And then you're going to have what is your observed, which the problem will give you. What is your expected, which is what we're going to work out next. And then you're going to do observe minus expected. Observe minus expected squared. Move this one over a little bit. And then observe minus expected squared divided by expected. And this is my actual chi square. So when you get to this point here, the sum of this equals chi square. So the total of that column is going to be my actual chi square. So you, the question is going to be in Canvas and it's not going to have this chart. So you're going to have to know upon reading it that you need to make this chart. So you need to be able to form this chart. So again, the question gave you this information. So it says, interphase yeast is 182, interphase human was 220. Mitosis yeast was 26, mitosis human was 14. So that's where you start. So then here's the hardest part, the rest is pretty easy, is the expected. So to calculate the expected, you're going to have to make a table. And then it's going to be the row total times the column total divided by the total total. So we have to reform our chart a little bit into columns and rows. So it's going to look kind of like my original one did. So we're going to have interphase and mitosis. And then we're going to have yeast and human. And you might kind of just done like, you probably could have just done this directly from what was written before. But again, you're going to have yours. And then we need to make a room for a total. And we're need a total down here. Okay, so I'm just rewriting these numbers over and over, 182, 26, 220, 14. Okay, so then we're just going to add those together. So we're going to go 182 tie or plus 220. So 402 total cells are found in interphase. And then 26 plus 14 is going to be 40. And then down here, we're going to go 182 plus 26. And that's going to be 208 total yeast cells. And 220 plus 14 for human cells, 234. Okay, so then when we get our expected values, we have to follow that formula. So for how many do we expect to be an interphase for yeast? It's going to be row total, which is 402 times column total, which is going to be the yeast column, which is 208 divided by the total total, which I forgot to calculate here. Which is going to be 442. And you can see that should have added up that way either way. Okay, so then we calculate that and it's 402 times 208. And then we divide that by 442. And it said, I should have had 189. Which actually means mine, you can tell, was actually not very far off. Okay, interphase in humans, so this time I'm looking at the humans. So I'm still looking at the interphase, row is 402. But this time my column is 234 over my total of 442. And I get 213 if I round, I'm just round on these. Okay, mitosis yeast. So this time I'm going to be looking at my mitosis row. So that's going to be 40. And my yeast is going to be 208. And it's still over 442. And it says I should have had about 19. So again, we're taking into account, I always expected some of these numbers to be lower. And then again, mitosis, so it's 40. But this time for humans, times 234 divided by 442. And it should have been 21. Okay, so there's my expected values. So now we just have to come over here and do my observed minus expected. So we're going to go 182 minus 189. And it's negative seven. This is also going to be seven. These are all going to be seven. So when you do it like this, you should get all the same number. So then observed is going to be 49, 49, 49, 49. But these numbers are going to be different because in this case, we're dividing it by the expected. So this is 49 divided by 189. So this is 49 divided by 189. And I'm getting .26. Over here is 49 divided by 213. And I'm gonna get .23. Over here is 49 divided by 19. So I'm gonna get a bigger number this time. It's gonna be 2.6. And here, it's 49 divided by 21. And it's gonna be 2.3. So to get my actual chi square obtained, I need to add all of these numbers together. So my chi square equals the sum of those numbers. You can already tell this is not gonna be a super high chi square. So this is already suggesting that it's not looking like there is a statistically significant difference in these two types of organisms. So this is 5.39. So now we worked that out. So the next two things you need to determine are what is your degrees of freedom? And then what is the critical value for P equals .05? So your degrees of freedom is just your number of categories minus 1, which is basically just the number of these you did. So your number of observes minus 1, if you will. So in this case, I did four rows. I calculated four different things. So that's gonna be 4 minus 1. So in this case, my degrees of freedom is gonna be 3. For the critical value, you're gonna have to look on the table, which will be given. And you're gonna look at what is it for degrees of freedom? And I don't have my critical table right on me. I think it was like 5.36 or something, which is very, very similar to this. I would have to, ah, I'm gonna write that. In this case, mine are very, very, very close. So then the last thing you have to do is compare yours. So in this case, so then what you're looking at is if, if your chi square is greater than your critical value, which mine is, but just barely, then you're going to reject the null. And you're gonna say there is a statistically significant difference. If on the other hand, your chi square is less than, then you're going to accept your null. And you're gonna say that any differences are just due to chance. So there's not a statistically significant difference. Any differences are only due to chance. Okay, so I'm gonna have to wrap this up, because I have to have kids come in for Eagles next. So we're gonna be doing this another time in class. But basically, you need to know, how do I make the table? How do I work out my expected values? What is the degrees of freedom? And then how do I use that to determine whether I'm rejecting or accepting the null hypothesis?